... Nate, Eric, Mike, John, Aaron, Sarah.
Here.
Brett, Stevens. Public Legits.
Public Legits to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
Need a motion for the agenda?
Motion to the consent agenda.
A motion to have a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Help again, but this is a time and place for discussion items, not already on the agenda, with a time limit of three months each. Luke Maloney, Lynn County Planning and Development, discussing rental and property maintenance inspections. Good evening.
Brandon, so this is Luke, this is a reference to the meeting I told you guys I went to in Center Point about a couple of months ago, I guess it was now. Lynn County Building is going to be taking over the rental property inspections, and there's going to be a little bit different of a process, and also they're willing to help out with some nuisance stuff. So I thought this would be a good opportunity for Luke to come in and just tell you kind of what the changes are and answer any questions that you may have.
All right, I'll choose.
Okay, Luke Maloney, Lynn County Building official. So, always a couple of months ago, the Board of Supervisors passed us with kind of defining our roles because we were crossing paths a little bit with Public Health, and the minimum housing inspections were similar and kind of based off of the Property Maintenance Code, which is, long story short, the building codes version of the "we need you to fix it" kind of, I think, was it, in it like that. So, Public Health is more focused on minimum healthy homes, minimum housing type situations. We're more on the maintenance of the property and the minimum standard from the construction side of it. Having said that, we're also a little more apt to enforce things because that's what the nature of our business is. So, long story short, we, Wednesday are interviewing some internal candidates for the position. We got funding from the board. They asked us to separate it, take over rentals, nuisance, property maintenance type situations. So, the overall big picture of the program is that the landlords will register with the city. That list will be obtainable through the water bill. The landlords will pay a registration fee initially, cost-wise. Brandon and I have to work out some things. I know the city's already paid the county for certain portions, so we'll navigate around that together. The inspection fees will be covered by the landlord. It's no different than any of the cities around locally. We'll perform our inspections on a biannual basis. They'll get a certificate of inspected housing, helps maintain the minimum standard of rental unit, also helps maintain tax base in the city. One thing I would like to point out is, our office, we do have, there's pretty much nothing that goes by unanswered. There's some way we deal with it, whether it's the tiniest little permit issue. If it's not completely complied with, we file affidavits against the property. Eventually, they will have to comply. That's a situation if we feel that the attorney's office doesn't have enough time to spend on it right now. It's an imminent threat type situation. Other situations, at this point, we take straight to county infraction, which when it gets to that point, obviously, the city attorney would have to make that decision and go from there. But there is definitely a cutoff of where we stop. But the whole goal is to get as much information out there, excuse me, upfront, so that the landlords and renters know what's coming. Everybody's used to our process. It's not reinventing the wheel every inspection. It's going to be a checklist-based rental inspection, complaint-driven for nuisance. Only, we will only investigate if the city asks us to, because there is a fee to that. A found complaint will be assessed against the property owner. An unfound complaint, we'll just not charge the city because our staff's driving through here anyway, so. That's kind of the big picture overview. I'm talking really fast so I don't take up too much of your time, but I'll explain any part of it if you'd like.
Any questions, Mark?
You've already met some of our prime realtors, or prime owners of rental property.
On occasion.
So, do you, so would you, do you follow our, like, if we have nuisance event, follow our code for nuisance event?
Actually, I would say no. We would follow maybe your enforcement process after they don't voluntarily comply with our process. The code will be no different than the building codes. We'll handle that adoption and amendment and all the rigmarole from that. It'll be adopted through reference in the 20 and E agreement, so you guys don't have to worry about it. We, we're not going to change anything. It's basically the property maintenance code that the code council puts out, so it's a very minimum standard. There's not, as an example, electrical, like, one of the comments is, when it was installed, at the time it was installed, per code, it has to be maintained in that operating condition. So we're not going to come in and say, oh, now code says this, you gotta do all that. That's not how it works. But we're just gonna make sure it's safe.
Any questions? Art, you getting questions, Marsha, so your attorney right behind you?
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, no, I mean, by the time it gets to me, usually the city has already sent at least one notice, possibly two. For example, let's say it's a junk vehicle, nuisance abatement. If it doesn't happen, then typically what would happen is they'd get a letter from me, given the next number of days, to remove it. I like to have all of those because once we file a municipal infraction, we leave those as exhibits for the court because then they can show that the city has been more than flexible with trying to give folks, you know, a reasonable period of time to abate the nuisance. Then it goes to trial, and we look for an order from the court to comply and potentially a municipal infraction fine, so.
Any questions? All right, why don't you work with Brandon and get this going?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Luke.
Discussion possible action in reference to appeal hearing for animal removal, sorry.
All right, so this is a reference to the last appeal, as I said, last meeting. The date on the screen's paperwork was incorrect, so we rescheduled it for tonight. There is some additional information that was presented, as you'll see in your packet. There is a valid vaccination record that's been put on file here along with the dog being registered with the city on June 1st. Vaccine record was from March of this year. And then also, I've attached a picture of the emotional support identification card that Mr. Green provided to me.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else that's relevant to this? I mean, we made a ruling on this, I mean, is there anything else that you want to add?
A few things, yes. So like any other judicial system in the country, when somebody drops the ball, things get dropped. Everything gets dismissed. I have been rescheduled and been in front of you guys four times now, trying to be the better person and do the right thing. I'm not trying to bring my dog back in under a different name, which I know has been done more than once in this town. I'm not letting him bark and scream and lunge at people when they walk by like the dog in the corner does every day. I, I just don't understand why there's an appeal process, and everybody seems to be on the same page, but nothing is being done.
I'll just say, the first-
So what's the point of an appeal if?
The first, the first time I just came before us, I wasn't here. Nate was in charge of it. I was here the next meeting, and we, you were on the agenda for, because they didn't, they didn't make a decision that day?
The first time Doug told me a date, it was not the right date.
No, 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 the very first time, they didn't make a decision on it.
Right, the very first time, yes.
The second, the second time, I don't know if it wasn't a date, but you weren't here.
Because Doug Shannon told me the wrong date. He says he's got body footage of telling me the right date, but I still haven't seen that.
So we, we made a decision on that, and then you came, I think, like, the week, two weeks later, because you thought it was two weeks later. So then we accommodated you to have it, because we couldn't, you were going to be gone, or somebody was going to be gone. So we accommodated you to move it even further back. And then, what, what happened to that? I mean, I don't think you showed up for that one either.
That was-
So that was at the last one night that I put the wrong date on her paperwork, so then we had, now we're current, up to this. I just, what I just want to know, they, they've made it, the council's made a decision. Is there anything else relevant to this that would sway their minds on that?
Sarah had said that he was registered with the city, and I could give the proof of vaccination. That weighed heavily on her. I'm trying to do things in the right order to get my dog back. I'm not trying to be a mixed sex or a pain or-
When True supposedly lunged at this kid, was he vaccinated at that time?
Yes.
I, because I, I don't know the date.
I don't, no, I don't have the paperwork because-
Well, they have.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a-
March 21st.
March 21st.
No, I, I take that back. I don't know when the, when was the animal, but-
January, but he was, I mean, I, we already had that discussion about all of that. We need to go over that again.
So she lost the paperwork, or she, when she moved out of her previous residence, she had the dog vaccinated. She couldn't get the paperwork. Vet closed in Davenport, I believe that's what it was.
Thank you, Brandon.
And then it was in March, she ended up getting it re-vaccinated.
Just to appease everybody.
That's the, that's what you have.
That's what you have. I registered him with the city, just in case. His tags on his collar, just in case.
My support issue is what bothers me the most. You could just-
Why is it one mental health is taking over another, such as, we understand the situation with the child, but why is his mental state only being looked at and not hers? Where this dog is also a main source of her mental state, whereas this kid, we don't know if he provoked him. Do we know that for a fact? Do we know that he even lunged at this child? We don't have any source of proof of this, we just have a hearsay. And, I mean, kids lie. I'm just going to say that everybody has a source of, like, I'm just, does this child know Cory from previous of something? Does he have something?
He's my neighbor.
Okay, so right there in itself, if he already, he could already have something against her just based off of who Cory is, personal reasons. A lot of people have a threat for, against pit bulls, so that in itself could be his reason why he feels that he can say or do whatever he wants because he's a child, and he, Cory has, she has a record. Everybody is going to, she, she can't do no, she can't do anything about that. But it seems like she's being labeled as something because this child said her dog did something to him. Like, where's the proof of it?
I, I don't think anybody's labeling her, first of all. Nobody's, we all know that Cory is a good person. This is, this is about our ordinances that we have to follow. Can we go about this emotional support thing? I can go, I don't even have a dog, but I can register a dog and have a support animal. I, I can go on today, on their website, and register any pet as a, as an emotional support-
He's been working for an animal for four years.
I'm just, I'm just saying, like, it's not-
Why can't we change the ordinance of it?
You have to have a doctor's note before you can get-
No, you do not. No, you, no, you do not.
Not some of them, though, not all of them.
No, you don't. If you have, if you have a landlord that does not allow pets, you have to have a doctor's notice. A doctor's notice and a certification from the doctor, yes. So, I'm just saying, I go in and get an emo, so, but I get it, I get it. There's some people that need that, right? I get that. I'm just, what we're basing this on is our ordinances, and that's where we have to follow because that's set in the precedents for the rest of the community.
Okay, but then why is there an appeal process even in place if you're just, I mean, what's the point of appeal?
Because this is the first step we've seen, that we, personally, I wanted to see-
How do you guys define an appeal, then?
If you have additional information that you can bring to the, to the situation, then that's the point of an appeal process. If there is a chance that the decision can be overturned because of the additional information, that's the point of an appeal process.
Okay.
Did the council read the character references?
Did, did you guys get those in the previous package, the letters that were written on behalf of the dog?
I think you guys submitted those the first time.
Yeah, okay. You know, I think at issue here is, is the dog vicious, and I think that's a definitive no. There's a gray area in the ordinance as to what defines at large. I think that's part of, part of the problem here. And so, you know, what we want, what we're asking the council to do is, is to take that with the fact that Cory's been 100% compliant with, with what she needs to do, and reconsider the ban of the dog, because he's not a bad dog. He's a great dog, and, and, and they're family. And so, you know, families look different. Families look different, and this is an opportunity for the, for the council to do the right thing and reunite this little family. And I, ordinances, you know, I mean, I understand the importance of ordinances and precedents, but in this case, if, if you were even setting a precedent, it's not a bad one. And so, it's an opportunity.
It shows the appeal process works.
It's an opportunity for the council to do the right thing, which is to let a good dog back home to be with his family.
Well, I, I can attest to the reasons why she really needs a support dog because I've been through this and we're still going through it with a stalker that she dealt with that. I still have, I can show you a text message right now, it's still in my phone. Him threatening to burn down my house, threatening to burn down her house, sending her pictures of her sleeping on her couch and saying, you might want to put your lighter fluid away. But nobody did nothing until this guy threatened to burn down, hang on, hang on. So nobody did nothing until I got a hold of Nick Walton and say, hey, this dude's threatening to burn down your building where Cory lives in. So Cory gets a hold of cops, and then he was threatening to burn down the box landing in Wilkie Slicker, where she works at. Sending messages, he told me in a message that he was going to hunt her down and kill her. So I talked with Morgan from the upper end of Police Department at Nick Walton's house. I said, why did it take six months for somebody to do something about this? And then drag my name into it? And say that I'm selling this and that, and next thing, and I had no idea that, how I even gotten involved in any of it. So now I, now I'm involved in this whole litigation thing, and I've got to go to court over here, and I don't know whether it's supposed to come up, or they got to push back. But I'm like, why did it take three business people in this community, these two communities, to get threatened for her to get some kind of action done? So I understand why she would want to have her dog, who looks aggressive, who looks mean, of course, but he's a puppy dog, pick up realistic terms of him. But I understand why she's probably, you know, nervous now in apprehension because her life has been threatened.
And I get no protection or service from anybody in this county.
So, I just, I just find it hard to believe that. You guys, you guys have been out on the pimp process. I could be like, she won her appeal. Anybody, what precedent she's setting? You're setting that the appeal process works, she did everything she needed to do. The, the bite wasn't nearly as, as bad. I mean, there's dogs, you know, that have attacked people that are still in town, but since it was done privately or whatever, you wipe running, but then it attacked her dog. To me, that's just as much as hacking a person, that doesn't attack dogs, and you're asking for a law. And so, where, where are you gonna, you know, to me, I just-
So the appeal process is just like any other appeal process. You get the chance to appeal the decision that was made. And that's exactly what we're here today to do, right? So you guys have brought us, Cory has provided more information. We can take that information, but we're just kind of repeating everything that we've said before. I mean, at this point, Doug asked for anything that was new to the case, new to the, the whole situation. We've got paperwork. At this point, we have to decide as council, does it remain standing or do we, do we reverse, right? So that's, that's where we're at. So the appeal process isn't broken, but-
No, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying that if, if you guys are saying that, you got to, you're setting a standard. Well, not really, I mean, you-
Well, we are, because if this happens again to somebody else, is it, then-
They'll go through the appeal process, and you guys can say yea or nay.
But then it looks, okay.
How's it, how's it?
Okay, and that's mine. And we say, we say yea for her, but then we say nay with the same situation the next time. How does that look on us? Is that fair to the next person, the dog owner? It's just what I'm saying about precedent.
It's a situational thing. So the next one, you're going to do the same thing, you're going to do with this appeal. You're going to look at the evidence, and you're going to weigh the evidence. The next one might be worse, so it makes it easier on you to go, yeah, this, you know, required stitches, you know, kid's missing a nose, I mean, they don't, they didn't produce anything to defend the dog.
Or they underacted like they didn't care, I mean, you know.
So, you know, I mean, I'm not just, I'm not trying to be argumentative or anything, I'm just saying that.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain the appeal process is how.
You know, I don't know where you, what kind of precedent you'd be setting just if she wins her appeal. Because each one's-
No, I'm just saying that if, 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 there's a reason why we have ordinances, and that's totally a little bit of-
I agree with that 100%, you know. I'm just saying, it's, there, there, each, each appeal is going to be individually based, so.
So you live in one of the upstairs apartments on Main Street?
I'm downstairs in the alley. I have no front Main Street access.
So you have a- But she lives right on the alley, like, kind of.
Behind the lawn mat.
Well, we've got two big ones living upstairs in, in the brick house on the corner.
Yeah, they're big.
Let out, yeah.
They're noisy.
I'm wondering how to adopt an ordinance that wouldn't allow that. I'm a dog lover. I understand all of what you're saying, that big dogs shouldn't be confined.
Hold on, he gets walked all the time.
And I, I will be with you, I always see you walk in trouble. Most of the time, most of the time, I see True laying down, and you try and move him.
He's doing a business and being kosher and mellow around people in businesses. He's gone into Casey's, he goes into Dollar General, he goes into the bank. He is the most mellow dog in a public setting, so.
Yeah, he goes all those places with me.
He's a good dog, deserves to go home.
He doesn't just sit outside, he goes inside with her.
All right, the council has made a decision on this. Does any one of you want to reverse this decision?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would ask the council, if there's any further discussion among council members, and then I would, I would recommend that a council member make a positive motion that they allow the dog to come back into the city. And then each council member can vote. A yes would be to allow the dog back, and no would be to not allow the dog back.
Public Legits, I'm trying to figure that. Are there any questions to each other?
I don't know what the law says about support dogs. Anybody can just call their dog a support dog, I understand. Does it have to be trained? And what legal force does that have for her to keep her dog?
Yeah, that's really not the issue here, John, whether or not the dog is a therapy dog or an animal support dog. Even if your dog is a therapy dog or a support dog, if it commits an act that violates the code and it's deemed a vicious animal, it doesn't matter, it can't be in the city. The, the issue, where I see this come up a lot, is when folks are in apartments, which we talked about earlier, and somebody has a therapy dog, and the landlord says, no pets. So then they present a certification or an opinion or a letter from a doctor or a therapist or caregiver that says this person would benefit from having a therapy dog. And then they, then the landlord will allow them in the property. But by the same token, the dog can't trash the apartment, chew on the common grounds, defecate in the yard, and not have the owner clean it up. I mean, there's still recourse for the landlord.
And there's not a, an animal banned in Cory's building that she's aware of, that any of us are aware of.
His service not before that, before he even get there.
His service, his service registration predates this by years, so, and then lastly, wasn't the vicious dog charge dropped? Okay, so, the vicious dog charge was dropped.
No, I think the, the no, wasn't, wasn't it the vicious?
I think, the only thing she was charged with was this certification.
There were two criminal charges. That one was dropped, the non-registration.
The non-registration was dropped.
No violation for a vicious animal is a definition.
Right, but that has nothing to do with what the code says. That's a criminal act, this is a civil matter.
The crim, the criminal charges were dropped in, for, for everything related to the dog?
No.
Other than the registration.
Other than the registration. I think, if I remember correctly, she pled guilty to that.
Yeah, we just paid my fine. Paid the fine, and then came and registered the dog.
Okay, what happened with the vicious dog designation?
It didn't meet the, the definition of the code to be able to force that.
It did not meet the definition of the code.
For a criminal base, criminal, this is civil.
Basis did it meet?
It meets the civil code.
The, the local?
Under chapter 55.
Which says that the, the, the dog attacked someone in public property. I'm paraphrasing very much here.
And was deemed a vicious animal pursuant to the code, and this council's already voted for the removal of the dog.
So this is two or three months going down the road, right?
Three and-
Where's the dog now?
Not in town.
Pardon?
Not in town.
No, okay, who's got it? Somebody, didn't you have it? You had it. Prevent any issues?
No, sir. A model citizen.
He's making lots of friends down there.
He's making lots of friends.
You mean, I don't want to come back, no matter how old he is?
I don't care.
He, he mopes, he mopes.
He misses her.
Yep.
Absolutely, he mopes.
I, I'm a dog lover. I would be, I would be willing to vote, to give it a chance, another chance, but move that much.
Oh, I understand.
Does that motion, Mike?
Yes.
I second.
Second, and listen to second, before, before we call a vote.
The dog bit somebody. The police were called. A report was filed that the dog bit somebody, and that person had bite marks on their hand or something. Right?
Yes.
That person did not say to provoke the dog.
Well, he never showed up here at all. I've asked him to come down and give me like a written statement at the post office. He said he would, and then he just doesn't return my phone calls.
Because that's the only hang-up for me.
Does anybody, do you, do you guys have pictures?
You came in the house.
Do you guys have pictures of this guy's hand?
And True was in the house with him.
No.
There was no issue.
I've never seen a picture.
Yeah, the guy, the guy walked into our apartment, so she cleaned his hand up. And after the dog was in the apartment, he did, and he didn't do anything.
No, it was not what she saw.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm bringing that across.
That's the thing you got to understand, is where's, where's, there's a, there's a gray area on the provocation thing. Was he provoked? Did he cut across her property? I know he, he could extend a foot into the public area, but, you know, who knows? Did the guy walk up, start her from behind, and he just basically lunged and nicked at him? Because I, I've had that happen before with dogs, they just, they kind of just playing or jumping, and then they accidentally get your hand.
But I've always been told a number of things for any type of service dog. You never approach the dog without the owner's permission.
You know, we've had a lot of discussion tonight, which a lot of this, I think, is conjecture. Maybe it happened, maybe it didn't. Remember, the Mount Vernon Lisbon Police Department did a full investigation. They would have interviewed the person who was bitten, and I believe they interviewed you, I think. I don't recall for a fact. So the officer would have done the interview and collected all the facts at that time. And at that time, it was determined, if I recall, that the dog did, in fact, bite the victim on public property and caused injury. I mean, that's what the issue here before the council is. And as, and as, sorry, sorry, Nate, and as a reminder, this council's already voted, wants to have the dog removed from the city. It's been appealed, more information's been brought, you've had a discussion. I think there's now a motion on the floor to let the dog back into the city in a second, so. And I'll answer any other question Nate or anybody else has.
No, I, I, too, love animals. I would love to say yea to this thing, but I have to, I have first a commitment to the law, to the code. The code says vicious animal has to be removed from town. The, the, the dog was defined as a vicious animal based upon the report and full investigation by the police department. The, 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 the dog was defined as a vicious animal based upon the report and full investigation by the police department.
I was under the impression that what you mean, that this lawyer said we were picking the word vicious out of that.
That's been dropped, that's not what we're.
Sorry.
They're saying that, that he meets the civil definition, but the criminal charges were dropped, so there's an incongruence there.
All right, let them be.
Yep, that's it.
Sorry, I got a motion in a second, Sarah.
I am gonna say aye.
John.
Nay.
Mike.
No, what are we, I'm not sure exactly what.
We're allowing the dog, allowing the dog back into Lisbon.
Uh.
Nay. See, this is the good part about being a mayor.
I'm sorry, I have to say nay. Until the, until the code is changed.
Two, two votes, the same as no.
Um, so they're probably their next, their next, their next one would take us a quarter, probably, right? Their next step.
Who's next up?
For them, to get the dog back into town.
I can't give a legal advice, I can only give you.
No, I mean, of course not. Then your attorney would tell you that.
So, how, Councilor Scott here, we can't get a majority vote one way or the other, and you don't cast a?
I can't.
If you have to vote, two to two makes it enough.
I can't, I can't cast a deciding vote. I could, I could overturn it, but I can't, I can't cast it. Actually, I couldn't overturn this anyway, it's not a conclusion.
Where is Councilor Scott, just have to.
Where's he at? I don't have it. I know we called him, he couldn't be here tonight.
Doesn't matter.
I wonder how the full council make a difference.
It's not on us, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Discussion on possible action in reference to buildings and maintenance. All right, this was brought up, I believe, in a joint school board meeting that we had earlier this year. So there's two options there in front of you. This would be a twenty-four by thirty-two shed or a thirty-two by thirty-two shed. I know that some people may ask, you know, with the sports complex and everything going in, why would we build a shed there now? If you recall, the phase one of the sports complex does not have any structures over there at the time. We are talking, we're working with Dave to potentially build something on the back of the well or in that area. I don't think it's gonna be near big enough for what we would need for out there. And we are completely out of storage space at the park. If you recall, we're in order to drag, it's been backordered numerous times to point the guy, call back, and we can't get that drag from that location. The school has a tractor and drag, and basically said if we had somewhere to store it, we could use it anytime we wanted. So this would be a good opportunity to build something, store that tractor there, we would have use for it. Hopefully get Drayton's tractor in there, and then obviously this way these other things, the nets that the, that it can use. We don't need you anymore, you can go.
You were supposed to say that right after.
I had to make sure that gets in the notes.
I got you time right now.
Now we just got charged another hour.
Thank you, Mark, I'm rounding up.
Yep. The next.
Thank you, Mark.
Six hour work. Um, wasn't the history center supposed to be next on the agenda?
No.
No.
As the agenda I have.
Sorry, sorry Becky, it was. We'll, we'll get through this quick. We'll do this real quick and then, it ain't gonna take very long. All right, Beck?
Oh.
Sorry about that, I can't read.
You were gonna read it.
Okay, so you've got two options.
So the two options here, and you have the prices for each of them, thirteen seventy-three, seventy-two, and sixteen thousand, thirty dollars and four cents.
These are, this is going over at the park?
Yes.
Where?
What's that?
Where at the park?
Kind of by the batting cage.
Between, yeah, the east of the batting cages, somewhere between there and the bunny field and that drawaway. Correct?
Yeah.
And the plan is to do most of the work ourselves, so this would be basically just for materials. There would be, we're gonna have to pour concrete, so that'd be in addition to this. But most of the work will be done in-house, and I think Rod was hopefully gonna get the CTE classes involved in doing some of that as well.
And who owns it?
We do. It would be ours, so what we would do, they're willing to go fifty-fifty on it. We would essentially just upcharge the lease for next year, whatever that amount ended up being. And then they would pay us half of that.
Any other questions? I, one, one time, I would say, you know, for basically about three thousand dollars more, you get the bigger building. I mean, you can have a little extra concrete, but I, I mean, I, I don't see our programs, whether it's schools or parking racks or anything, diminishing any, so I mean, that's my opinion. Is there any else thing? Any motion or anything?
Well, I mean. I get that we're out of space, but we're, the city's going north with their park investment, but this seems to be almost a hundred percent benefit to the school only.
Drayton, is that true?
Um, no, because Brandon, as Brandon mentioned, we're probably not gonna be able to build a big building out there right away. Um, it sounds like I might be able to fit some soccer goals in the shed behind the well, but that would be it. So, I mean, this is extra storage for me. Right now, I'm working with the garage, it's pretty much all I've got. Um, the softball has a shed, the baseball has a small shed, and then I have an upstairs stores that houses all of our Halloween town equipment and stuff like that. There's just not much space over there at all.
You're talking upstairs with the concession and baseball?
Yep. So there's bathrooms, there's the concession stand, and then there's a storage space for me, a garage for me, and then there's one, um, storage area, a small storage area for each of the baseball and the softball, right now.
I just don't know if, you know, depending on the uses, those two tractors could arguably be there forever. Depends on, you know, there's so many places that he goes with those, I mean, it's not like there's, should be one home for it. Right now, it's in the city shop, and I know Travis is probably tripping over all the attachments and everything.
I was gonna say that, I've got so much stuff over in Travis's shop right now, that, I mean.
It's a city shop, I don't know.
Well, city shop, and he's running out of room over there because I've got all my stuff over there.
I, I know it doesn't, that, that was kinda my thing too, is like, you know, how's this look, but I, I just, I just don't know that you'd ever abandon it till, okay, here you go, the school, you can have this whole thing, I just don't see that. Unless we built.
I mean, how much is, how much is the school using of existing city buildings on the park already? I mean, they're, they, they take over all summer long.
Yeah, and I don't know, pre, you know, arrangements that were made, or who bought what, or built what, or, you know, I don't know if the city built the press box, bunny fi, I don't, I don't know any of that.
No, no, they didn't.
So, um, you know, this was just something where if you can get it done and they split the cost, I know we've been working pretty well with them together.
Just completely cover the cost.
Are they willing to split the cost?
Yes.
I'd be in favor of building a bigger building, it's only costing us fifteen hundred more. And I doubt it's gonna sit there unused a few years from now.
Do we have any stipulations from the alt-right about buildings or, that's all free land to us?
It's, the only, I think, that's the way I've ever heard it, the only stipulation is it can never be used, may never given to anybody but the city. So, I mean, it's, it's like when Doris McMillan, when she died, and they did the press, the scoreboard at Bunny Field. Bunny knows that if they ever move that field, that scoreboard has to stay, that's the best part of cities.
I just don't want it to become a tin town over there, you know, I guess we got a lot of little buildings. City dugouts and your, each one, softball and baseball have both got storage and bathrooms. That's, that'd be the only thing, if it's gonna look, look decent, I don't have a problem with it.
For the ratio, you couldn't see, I mean, all that stuff with overtaking with rotten junk trees, so. I guess a nice building there.
And that's what I would say, you know, this sports complex up here, in, in fruition or whatever, it ain't gonna happen for two years. I mean, it ain't gonna be done for two years, you know, by the time it's all seeded.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want it to look like junk town over there.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I, I think it, it would, it'd be nice to cap everything, it's kind of.
And, you know, I, I mean.
You'd have to haul it over there eventually.
Originally, when we built the concession stand there and the bathrooms, there was enough storage there. In, on, in that building, that was original.
For around seven.
Parts of the school.
Yeah.
Did you see the photos?
I understand.
I mean, it's not really photos, but, so it is a sided building, asphalt shingles. I did make some notes, stick-built ten-foot walls, and then there'll be two sixteen-foot overhead doors.
So it's not a tin shed?
No.
And I, it's like a.
Right through? Both doors are. Same, yeah. No service doors, um, schools have a lot of issues with, that no one knows no service doors, so that just prevents access. People, vandalism, that type of stuff.
I would, um, you know, like I said, we're not gonna be out here till, for probably two years. I mean, Drayton's still gonna have to mold the parks. We spent a lot of money on that tractor, I mean, every piece, I feel, every piece of our equipment should be inside. I mean, the citizens of Lisbon spend a lot of money on equipment for, for cleaning up some stuff in this town.
I mean, I don't think any of it's stored outside right now, but I mean, you can, you know, you go over to the second shop over there, I mean, that's full too. I mean, right now, you're keeping the ten-twenty-five over at the city shed?
Correct.
Travis's shed?
Correct.
Any motion, guys?
Some move to build a bigger building.
Those two?
Got a motion, build a bigger, the two buildings are in a second, I think if you choose to do it, that's the smart, I mean, for the money, yeah, that's. Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second. Hey, Doug, one second here. Who's gonna have access to this building?
I would say the school and the city.
No, I know, but is that, I mean, coaches too, and, cause I think that's part of the problem now you're having is. We can figure that out. Well, I've.
Well, do we need to, do we need to secure something inside for city stuff and then school stuff for the other portion of it?
Is that what you mean?
Or, or do we move out of the existing sheds into this one, keep it secure and the coaches use it?
Are you saying like, let's say we just take that building, build a separate wall down the middle?
I think that's what Rod and I originally talked about way back when.
That, I mean, that would be very, it wouldn't cost a lot to put up a two-by-four wall, you know, once a bill.
You know, I'm, just, I mean, that's.
City down one end, school down the other, they can do whatever they want with theirs.
I mean, that's what I would like to see.
I think we need to figure, I think we need to do that, just figure it out, make it happen, figure it out.
Got a motion in a second, Sarah.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Mike.
Aye.
All right, discussion on possible action on reference to history center repairs.
Let's just move this to the end. All right, go ahead, Beck.
Um, I'm just here to answer questions, I guess, um, they've done the first, the first stripping.
Okay.
And, um, now we're just looking at what, what happens next, if we need to do more stripping, or if we can just seal what's there.
I, I read his report, um, the way I read his report, he didn't know if you need to strip another, the bottom again.
Right.
And then just, but there was something that he applied two coats of, that, um, it would basically be, it looked almost like a paint, so you wouldn't see the mortar.
Right.
Is that what I read, I read that right?
Right.
I mean, that was pretty much the only option he had.
Well, there's, there's, um, the center is. Well, the fact that, um, how much of the paint that's left on there is lead and how well we can encapsulate it so that it, it doesn't get out into the air and dust. And so we've done some research, and there's some guys I need to talk to that know, that know that sort of stuff a lot better than I ever will, and so I've just gotta make some appointments and go and talk to them.
So didn't these guys, did the Wilson Building do the library?
They did the brickwork on the library, yes.
Well, then why are, because there surely was lead paint on, on the library.
Oh, they didn't do the original back in ninety or ninety-one, or two or whatever, they weren't the ones that did that, the library back then. Because the library was done incorrectly, it was sandblasted, and that's why the bricks are falling apart on it now.
Some did just go off fix.
Wilson likes to pull the.
That was, I'm talking about back in ninety, when, ninety-one, when they did it.
So, but I, you know, I read his report, and about the only thing I've seen that he would recommend is doing that two coats of Lexon XP.
Well, that's the, that's the, the guy from, from, um, Sherwin-Williams.
Okay.
That, what, what he must have put on there is not breathable, and you'll end up doing more damage to the bricks.
Okay.
And so the, so the, um, the David Arbogast, um, who is a conservator and specializes in Masonry buildings, and he's not getting one of them that says that we need to do a breathable product, so when water's going to get in, I don't care what you put on it, it's gonna get in, and so we have to have a breathable prop can get back out, or the bricks start falling apart, and everything starts peeling off, and the bricks start falling apart. And then put up in the building.
So when the water gets in, let's say, and it's thirty below zero and it starts to expand, it starts breaking all the bricks, where are we gonna do that?
Well, that's why you want the water to be able to get out right away, if you've got a seal and the water gets in, it can't get out. If the water gets in and is easily comes, it'll come back out faster than, then it'll get a chance to have a brick, have the bricks freeze. I mean, there might be a few down the road that that happens too. Just because bricks will do that, you know, sooner or later, some of them are gonna do that. But the whole idea of a breathable that can get right back out, it can evaporate, get out of that brick as fast as possible.
Okay, so you're talking about putting a paint on?
Yeah.
So you're gonna paint it to look like a brick?
Well, you won't see, um, you ever notice the old, um, what was that market on the corner of Highway One and Main Street, Mount Vernon? On the southwest corner, Big Creek Market or something?
Yeah.
Oh. Anyway, so it's, it's, it's painted an orange, like the orange brick, and, you know, it's really not bad looking, and the one across the street is painted brown.
You got the red brick up here on Main Street right now, that's painted, that's just paint.
Right.
So, okay, we got this grant from this company that was gonna take off the paint.
Well, they were gonna do one coat of stripper, that's what their, that's what their contract was. Because they, no one could tell what the paint is really like under there, and we might even have a milk paint under the, under the lead paint, which is like nearly impossible to get off, is what I'm told.
Okay, Beck, last time we talked, you said you were gonna read in their contract about, cause they, they did it when it was too cold, they thought, remember?
Uh-huh, and Brandon talked to the guy from DSM, and I'm not sure what all they talked about, maybe, maybe he knows a little more than I do about that.
He said the weather was not a factor, and he said he had hoped it would have taken more off, but he says it's unknown how many layers of paint that are on there, and it just kind of is what it is.
Okay, so, I was looking at it kinda today, why didn't they do the very top?
Say what?
It's not a, Becky, do you wanna describe the top portion that they didn't, that's not a brick, it's a.
Oh, right, um, Algers, when they did that, instead of fixing the brick, they just stuck on that. Oh, right. Um, Algers, when they did that, instead of fixing the brick, they just stuck on that.
Okay, okay. So, we got, we got money from somebody to take that off, right?
We got two thirds of that paid by a brand, yes.
What are they gonna do, 'cause we didn't get it all?
Well, we did what, we did what the con, what our contract with them, they did what they said they would do.
The contract was to use a layer of stripper.
Right, right. And hope for the best. Right.
But I'm talking on the grant. We don't have to pay anything back 'cause we don't, 'cause we're gonna pay it.
No, as far as I know, we don't, because we've done everything that, well, as the contractor.
Is there another step from someone else that would get it to the point where we need to be?
Um, possibly. That's what I have to find out is, I have to get educated about how products, yee-haw. That, that's what, um, that's what I'm, my next step is to, is to meet with these guys that deal with these products for masonry and, um, and talk to them because it's, like I said, we, I need to find out if we do have enough of the paint off or if we're gonna have to do another, another stripper. And, um, there's a, there's a million different, maybe not a million, a lot of different kinds of strippers that will, that will work better with different kinds of paint. And so if they think that we really should get more paint off, we would get some small amounts of this stripper and go and test and see what works on these paints, if that's what we need to do. Hopefully, we, um, have enough and that we can seal that one. That's what I've gotta find out. Um, if you try to seal in the, the, uh, lead paint, that paint isn't breathable. And so, the breathable paint, if there's a breathable paint, that would be considered strong enough to seal it. Because we don't wanna put something on that won't let it breathe and then why are we putting breathable paint on? And we're just gonna end up having more problems with the building too close down the road.
Yeah, that's what confuses me, is how can a paint seal and not seal at the same time?
Correct. No, that's, that's one reason why they use the, the lead paints and the oil based paints. 'Cause like oil based paints actually breathe a bit. The, the latex and acrylic paints do not breathe. And that's all fine on, you know, new wood, but, you know.
I also noticed that there's damage on the, of bricks. I mean, I, down low, like.
Oh, yeah.
I know there's, they, so, they just stripped. They weren't gonna repair the wall.
On your contracts.
Uh, that's kinda.
For this, for this part.
This part of the guy.
So now, so now we have a bid from them and we're waiting to hear about a grant that we've applied for, for doing all the brick repair work, which will, which will happen in the fall. So now we've got time now to look into what else we can or need to do before that happens or maybe after that happens. Let them fix the bricks and then we'll go back and, uh, strip areas that need it or something. I don't know. I really don't know until I'm.
Well, I mean, I, I think.
Go ahead, don't say.
I think about our only option now is to get it stripped as best as we can and repair the bricks and then repair it. I mean, that's about it.
Right. I do, I do think that's, I do think that's right. I don't think it's ever gonna be, um.
It ain't gonna be brick, Beck.
It's not, yeah, there's, that, that bottom layer paint has really, has really seeped into the brick. And so I think it would be impossible first to get that paint off and have it look like a pristine building.
Yeah, according to his report, it doesn't sound like it was ever actually brick color, if you read his report.
The paint wasn't.
Yeah, the, the paint was never.
Well, the paint wasn't.
Yes.
Right.
So, in the grant writing situation, do we get a big black mark because we've run into this issue?
No, no, this is, this, this wouldn't surprise anybody out there, getting help with grants.
Surprise me.
Well, they.
I really thought the company could do what they said they were gonna do.
Well, I, I guess, I'm on the same boat as you, Mike, because when they approached us to it with it, they were confident. And I, and that's kind of where I was at. Now I feel like this is turning into a complete money pit and I don't know where it's gonna go. We're not even confident that we're gonna be able to do anything with the repairing of the bricks. I mean, until we get that person in to look at it. So I guess it might, that's.
We might have looked at that.
It's the same company they looked at.
Right.
They've estimated how many bricks.
Alright, Beck, what I guess I'm gonna instruct you to do is just keep going forward with this. Find out, you know, what they're recommending. Get the, get a, get at least stripped, get the bricks fixed on the bottom.
So we have a quote for the bricks to be fixed? Is that what you're saying?
It's like sixty-four thousand, I believe, is the.
Yeah, that's.
And you got, you've got a grant out there in the process maybe to cover some of that?
Right. I can hear back on that one.
Do you know how much it would cover by chance?
I think it's twenty-four thousand.
Keep looking for grants.
And then there's another, and then there's another grant waiting on, just looking for it.
And correct me if I.
Yeah.
What's that?
No.
Uh, the, the quote from DSM to, I know it's the, the Lexon paint, which doesn't apply, but it was, uh, fifteen thousand for the painting, correct, from them?
I, so, it's, I mean, he was kind of ballparking. He hasn't actually done a real bid on that, but that was, that's what he thought, he was ballparking it.
Is someone going to document what it looks like now with the, you can still see a sign there?
Yeah, we've, oh, there's, we have.
You know, that.
Files.
I see. You know, the sign in Wilson's Grocery, I think that's, I mean, that was pretty cool. When that building was built, it wasn't Wilson's Grocery, you know, so I mean.
Right, right.
I mean, I, I always remember the, Wilson's Grocery, but I mean.
There's also a ghost sign that's Canada Dry, you know, it's an advertisement for Canada Dry, but it's just, it's just barely there. And so the conservator said, well, you could repaint all of that, but you really wouldn't be restoring it or just, it wouldn't be anything authentic. He said he'd be better served to have someone paint a cool mural on it.
Have you ever, have you guys ever reached out to, like, the city, the Buick? You know, some of those old buildings down there, I mean, they got those original, you know, old Durham signs and stuff like that.
Right.
You know, I'm talking about, I mean, see how they sealed their, I mean, they look, they look old still, but they look, they're very sound.
Right, right. They were able to get a, you know, or they were never painted, which is probably the case. And so like, if you look at the library, well, you know, they replaced bricks in the library and they're very close to matching. They would match better if, you know, they were sand blasted like the brick on the library, but. So, you know, that's, they, they make bricks that match this orange brick that we have in this area.
Well, are there more grants out there? Are we, how close are we coming to be able to have grants to pay for the repair and et cetera, completion of this site?
I would love for somebody to find some more grants to apply for.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I, I'd like to, how much, do we know the exact cost to get it to where we think it's gonna be? And how much of that grant money do we have to do it? That's a big chunk of change for the city of Lisbon.
Right.
You know, are you, are you saying it was sixty-four thousand?
About eight thousand.
So it's about eight thousand.
Repair the bricks and do a paint overlay, or the, the bids that we have currently, was around eight thousand total.
And we've got how much towards that, maybe?
Well, we've just done the first, the first section of it, so we've only done the first thirty thousand.
So do you, do you know, I'm just, you said you got possible grants out there that you've applied for? Do you know, do you know when those are awarded, by chance?
Um, we were told that, that the one for the brick work, um, should, we should know in early July.
Okay. 'Cause I mean, obviously, none of this will start before sourcrows days.
Right.
But I'm also, you know, I don't, I don't want to be working on it in December either.
Right. No, no, I don't either. I bet they don't either. No, I think that's, that's, that was already discussed. The council discussed that and that was agreeable with them that, that would work out with their schedule too, is to do this in the fall.
I guess, I guess what I would like to see, just keep going on this, keep us informed, keep Brandon informed, let him, he'll keep us informed. You know, I mean, it's, I mean, we're, we're like halfway there right now. I mean, it's just.
Right.
I mean, we can't just stop and leave it unfinished now.
No, you know, it's a, it's a building smackdown in the middle of our downtown and we've gotten down to a register of historic places. Yeah, we need to, you know, we need to work at this.
Anybody else have any questions for Becky?
No.
Thank you, Becky. Sorry for putting you guys down.
Yeah, you owe me.
I owe you. Thank you guys very much. Discussion about possible action, approving resolution thirteen, twenty-two, board members. This is the annual approval of city board members. Uh, everything's just renewals. There's one addition, and that's Mike Donnell, who's gonna be joining P and Z. Um, after these approvals, there'll be one vacancy on the tree board and then several for the history center. Alright, motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion second, Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Discussion possible action, approving resolution fourteen, twenty-two, salaries for fiscal year twenty-three.
I got a question on this. Just Travis's, is that your actual salary? What, forty-one thousand?
I don't know.
That's like sixteen, that's like sixteen dollars an hour.
Forty-one dollars and twelve cents an hour.
Oh, that's.
That's not a comma.
Okay, so you have, you have hourly.
The dollar comes.
Yeah, the salary, sub labeled salary, everything else is hourly. Okay. 'Cause I was like, huh, Drayton, you were trying to pay those hundreds of dollars. And this is, uh, per what we discussed with, uh, personnel in the past and then per the contract of two point five percent.
That, that makes a lot more sense.
I didn't, I mean, I can't see very good. I didn't see, couldn't tell if it was a comma or.
Alright, get a motion.
Motion.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Discussion possible action, approving. You should see their face, why is it forty-one thousand? Discussion possible action, approving, resolution fifteen, twenty-two, Lisbon salaries for fiscal year twenty-three.
Uh, this is the same for the library. Their board is giving a six percent raise across the board.
This is all library stuff. Yeah. How do we do that, that?
Wow.
They've been trying to catch up their staff with local libraries.
If you do look at the, the cost of living right now, I, I haven't looked lately, but that's well within the ballpark of where we're at.
Well, I mean, I'm just, are they doing things besides selling plants to generate money or?
That's the friends of the library.
Huh?
That's the friends of the library.
So, so it's not even that. These, these like library assistants, they don't, they're not forty hours.
No.
No, no, no. These are just fill-ins.
Yep. In fact, there's at least.
Amy's the only one.
There's two of them that hardly are ever there unless Amy's taking a vacation. So. So this is just their hourly.
This is their hourly rate, yes.
Need a motion?
Some move.
A motion to a second.
Second.
Motion second, Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, discussion possible action regarding resolution sixteen, twenty-two, curb start lean release.
So this is for five nineteen North Washington Street. Um, all the, the total repairs plus the service fees have been paid to the city. And we need to have a formal resolution so that I can get it to the recorder's office to review the mortgages.
Motion move.
So this.
A motion by Mike, uh, second.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Nate.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
So public hearing in reference to changes to parking rec board ordinance.
Um, my notes say June twenty-seventh, but can we move that to July eleventh, please? So a public hearing set for July eleventh.
Motion, set public hearing for July eleventh.
Some move.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Wanted to see if you were listening. Correspondents.
I do not have any tonight.
City engineer, poor Dave.
Good evening. Just a couple of things to discuss. Been continuing to monitor the climate for asphalt work in the area. May seventeenth, DOT led a project in Iowa County. That's about a five and a half, nine dollar project. Um, pricing on asphalt doesn't seem to have come down much and, um, hasn't really changed our situation all that much. We also took a private, uh, bid, uh, or municipal bid, not DOT led, for Walford last week and that came in about sixty percent higher than we had estimated using the numbers that we provided with the Lisbon overlay, previous bid. So it doesn't really look to be a good climate to target with that project currently and will continue to monitor that. The other project that we continue to work on is the, uh, well monitoring project.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Uh, public work.
Uh, just, uh, piggyback on what Dave's saying, so we're gonna end up having to add rocks to the edge of the road 'cause obviously we don't see us doing anything this year. So that'll be something we're doing and then along with touching up bad spots that we weren't planning on having to do because we're hoping we do. Um, with help of Drayton, we've got the new, new mulch placed down at City Park. Um, we also have an abundance of mulch, so if anybody would like, like some, contact City Hall. We can, we can load it. We won't haul it. Other than that, I think Brandon's got a couple things that I'll probably touch up on, so that's it.
Any questions, Chris?
Where's the mulch thing?
We mulch.
We're being mulched. Okay.
We've got it.
You got it.
We got it, it's done.
That's, that's, yeah. Okay.
An abundance of it, so.
Any other questions for? Uh, how's the pool going?
Um, that's fine. Uh, Doc, we talked about it last meeting. We decided not to paint the weather conditions, so everything seems to be going great.
Going good so far. I'm reading for a jump, it's good.
Yep.
Police Department. Steve?
Nothing, that I was told.
Come to the meeting and say nothing.
I was here with you for peace.
Anyone?
Anyone?
I do not have one. Where are you going? Nothing. City minister.
Alright, um, I think we're getting through all the majority of the ash trees and the Duratio trees. We're down to, pretty close to the ones that require a crane, so, um, we'll keep plugging away there. Um, been working on, into the year, budget stuff, getting that all situated. Uh, the gazebo is built and finished at the pond, um, the McMillan Pond or Myers Farm.
Does that need to be painted?
Probably. I mean, it's treated lumber, but we should probably paint it.
Maybe an extra paint or a sealant.
Yeah.
Same glasses.
Um, I talked to Kirk links today. He stopped in. Um, he's hoping to have the barn done by the end of this week, if not next. He's got basically the doors left, so, um, that'll be the, the hay barn. Uh, met with a pre-construction meeting last Thursday afternoon, I believe. They're hoping to do, um, mobilization on Thursday or Friday. Um, we're gonna have a groundbreaking ceremony this Thursday at ten AM.
This Thursday?
Yes, out at the sports complex because as soon as they mobilize.
Yes, out at the sports complex, because as soon as they mobilize, they wanna start.
Oh.
So, the short window there, um, so, Thursday, ten AM, Thursday the sixteenth. Um, just kind of a synopsis here, they're gonna be doing mass grading through Friday, July fifteenth. Uh, utilities will go in, um, that'll take up to August twenty-fourth. They'll finish grading around Labor Day. Um, they'll do sub-bays and street paving, um, through September, uh, and also curbs. And then, uh, they'll finish curbs, finish driveways and locks, uh, the first week of October. Chip seal in October, middle of October, and then they'll start the topsoil and, um, do the initial seeding, um, when we, when the window opens, which I think is after September third, I believe. So, everything's still on plan to get most everything done, um, this fall. There'll probably be some odds and ends things that won't, but the main thing is that it will be seeded and we'll be able to establish, um, grass this fall.
Do we have a sign going up or anything that does indicate the area? So, I still get people asking where that's going.
Yeah, I, I believe Lisa's working on the new updated, like the one that's out here. Um, it's gonna be a little bit different than what's there, so, um, they're still working on that. Uh, we've been going back and forth with contracts and permits and working online with the DNR, so they've, they've, uh, done a lot of work here in the last few weeks, but I will, I'll check on that. Are you thinking of an outdoor sign?
Sign over there.
Sign over there.
Like a banner type.
Here's the project, yeah.
You know, with the basic overlay of what the, the facility looks like, or every.
You typically see a.
Yeah.
You, you.
Lisa gives you, take your records. Yeah, we can, we'll figure something out to put out there. Um, the planters, I did check on those, they're still three weeks out for the flower pots downtown.
Just in time for fall.
Probably, I don't know, if that crap is growing up around autumn.
That's good.
Well, and that, certainly also, it'll be. Unless you come from China too. We, we have some kids in planters, just like they had a rock, two hundred. Two months now, so, I'm, Pinterest, they just finally put plants in today. It's March morning, we can. Have you, that agreement, yeah, any questions, Brandon?
Mm-hmm.
Brandon, Brandon? Christina?
Uh, working with Brandon on the end of the year budget, and getting a new one started. Uh, I've got an EPR's audit tomorrow, and I have created an area clerks group. Um, a lot of the clerks are within the Highway thirty corridor area, so we will be meeting on Thursday for the first time.
Cool.
No drinking.
No drinking.
Um, back to Travis. Uh, trees out at cemetery, uh, like Mark Smith.
That was one thing I did have, sorry.
That's, yep, I forgot that too. So we talked, um, as soon as he gets that mode, we'll drive our equipment in there and do it. I didn't feel trampled down though.
Nope, that's right, yep. You got anything else for Christina? Charles, Nate?
I don't have anything today.
Michael?
Okay.
John?
Uh, there's some programs coming up at Heritage Hall, uh, on July thirteenth, seven PM. Jerry Barlow will be performing, he's a guitarist. And the following day on, uh, July fourteenth, seven PM, we, one of the voters is having a program on childcare, shortage of childcare in the area. And also every Thursday, ten thirty, eight, um, is story time at Lincoln Square, and, uh, who doesn't in there? That's all I have.
Sarah?
Um, I really don't have a whole, I know that you guys, public works are, are looking a little bit harder these days, so I appreciate that. Um, and just a reminder to everybody outside, the kids are out for the summer, or if they're on their bikes, walking, running, whatever, so just be more cautious when driving them. And kids just stay on track.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna kind of say the same thing about kids, um, especially around the park. I mean, especially like this way, you're, you're flipping nuts over there. I mean, I don't know if you're gonna have enough water for all the kids to play in. Um, you said that we haven't got the drag for the, his tractor yet, did we pay for that yet? Did we just cancel it?
Well, they couldn't, they couldn't get it, so, yeah.
I just told them we weren't gonna get it from them, so, I don't think, I mean, I don't really need one right now. I mean, anytime I need to use a tractor with a drag on it, I just go grab the school, so. Anyway, down the road we'll have to, but I don't think it's really necessary.
This Friday, there's the golf tournament for Monster, for the K-9, for the modern Lisbon Police Department. You got, how many, do you have any idea if you're full, you're deep?
Uh, I think we have sixteen teams as of today, we could use two more.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
Reminder that it's bulk item day this Saturday.
This Saturday.
This Saturday.
Which is.
We haul them down to the.
City shot, takes majority, electronics come to the city hall here.
Can't take paint or.
No, no hazardous materials, no tires.
All right, anybody got anything else? Me either.